Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We have a fantastically informed and interesting panel for you to engage with this evening. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Liz Gab. I'm the Neighborhood House Unit Leader for the City of Brimbank. And I'm very happy to be here with a group of people who are going to give you some insights into the vaccination program for COVID-19. But first, I would like to acknowledge that I am coming to you today from the lands of the Kulin Nation. And I would like to pay my respects to traditional owners, past, present, and those emerging. I would also like to acknowledge that we have a wealth of wisdom and experience in the virtual room with us this evening. And the first thing I would like to do is hand over to Maboa or Monica to welcome you to this South Sudanese Community Vaccine Information Forum. Monica?
Yes?
Would you like to welcome everybody to this forum? And give us a little bit of information about how this came together?
Okay. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon to you, all of you. And I'd like to introduce myself first. My name is Monica Majak. And she is a member of Mother Coalition. And actually, we're happy to welcome you and all of you. So the program of today, we came together as one body, city council, as Liz Gab introduced herself before, and Center for Migrant Refugee, usually by Maboa. And we're really happy to introduce this program because we're talking about vaccination. Because being a while for us, especially for South Sudanese community, we're doing this actually for South Sudanese community, to entertain them and to let them know, let them be aware, is awareness about the vaccination. Because the vaccine has been, people have been talking a lot about vaccination and how we introduce it to our people. That's why we said we can come together and do this together, to introduce about the vaccine, how people can get to be vaccinated in Victoria. I would like to say, I myself, I got my first dose. And I got my AYUN as my deputy. She is there also, she got vaccinated. And you guys will hear from her later on. And this thing is like to encourage our people also, so that people can understand about the vaccination. People take it in a different way, that vaccination will kill people or is not a good thing to be vaccinated. But for me, I took it as really, really, is a very, very important thing because to get vaccinated will help you and will help all your family. Because whenever sickness you got, it can rescue you for the sickness. That's my understanding. That's why I got to be vaccinated last time. And I was working in our care, where was the COVID-19 broke out? This first, this first last month, last four months? Yeah. And I was working there. And I feel myself, I feel myself all right. Because when I was not vaccinated, I was not feeling all right to work there. But when I get my first dose, I was really, I was really feel like something protecting me. So I'm happy and I'm glad I will give the floor to other people to see their insight. And thank you for having me today. And thank you for you, Liz Gab.
Thank you, Monica. Yes, can we go to you now, Maboa?
Well, thank you, Liz, and thank you, everyone who attended today. It's a great pleasure to meet all of you. And at this point in time, I think the community is quite astonished, surprised about what is going on about COVID-19 era. Especially when you look at diseases that cause serious illness, threatening complications, then you will see the community actually is quite anxious and fearing of the death and many things that are going on. First of all, my name is Maboa, as Monica alluded before, Madhur Chaddon, Executive Director for Center for Migrant Refugee Health. And what we've been doing actually, in conjunction with the Brimbank City Council, this off-site session, but something that we'll be discussing, you know, with Liz, you know, to be able to have such session today. And why is it important? It's important because we need to spread, you know, right messages to the community, given the fact that, you know, as we speak now, we have vaccine hesitancy. People are quite hesitant, you know, to get vaccinated. Not until we have a very good campaign, a very strong education awareness at the community, then we'll never get people going to vaccination booths to get vaccination in a high time. But it is our responsibility as a community, as well as, you know, government, local government, where Liz worked, you know, to be able to do something to people. So it's our responsibility as also, you know, healthcare services, like Western Public Health Unit, where Maroon came in. And I really thank Maroon for her participation today. This is a great opportunity for you to give us a lot of messages of what you think about the future of the West and what we should be doing in time to come. But otherwise, it won't take a lot of time. But I just want to welcome all of you. And let's just relax and discuss things as we go along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maboa, thank you. So yes, this is a partnership between Brimbank City Council Neighborhood House Unit, the Center for Refugee, no, sorry, Migrant and Refugee Health, and the Sudanese Mothers Coalition Victoria. And we've been doing a lot of work together, both through the pandemic and prior to that, to support the South Sudanese community in Brimbank and beyond. If it's okay now, I think I would just like to introduce the rest of the panel. And then we will go to Dr. Marion Kana, who we're very, very privileged to have here this evening. Marion is the Head of Infectious Diseases at Western Health. She's the Medical Lead for the COVID Response and Vaccination Program. And she returned from the US in October 2019. And before that, she worked at CDC in Atlanta. I'm going to ask Marion what CDC stands for. And then from the Tennessee Department of Health. Marion, can you just give us a little bit of enlightenment on where you were working in the US?
So I was working in Atlanta, Georgia, at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And so there I was, what was called an EIS Officer, an Epidemic Intelligence Service Officer, or Disease Detective, doing outbreak investigations and trying to stop people getting sick in hospitals, in particular. So when you go to a hospital, you want to get better. But sometimes you can actually get sick in a hospital from other germs. And my job was to try and prevent that from happening.
Thank you, thank you very much, Marion. I'm just going to whiz around the panel now and just introduce the people that we have here in the room with us. And then you can just give us a little bit of background as to who you are and what your relationship to the particular conversation we're having this evening. Let's go to, let's go to Tuj Ajak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tuj Ajak. I work at Kadini Shire Council. I work as a recovery officer for pandemic response. So throughout the pandemic, been doing a lot of work within the community and community engagement. And currently, there are a few programs that we are working. So I work closely, most of the time with Maboa, with Center for Migrant Center, Center for Migrant Health, and also with Mothers Coalition. So that's me, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tuj, that's great. Henry McCoy, can we speak with you, please?
Hi, everyone. My background, I'm a banker. And I work voluntarily with the community organizations. And I'm a member of directors for Center for Migrant Health. And also a member of Society of South Sudanese Professionals. Have been volunteering throughout since I came to Australia. And I'm very well aware of South Sudanese issues and how to assess the information to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Can we go to Madhur Tao, please?
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone, my name is Madhur Tao. If you just heard my name there. I work for IPC Health in Rapid Testing Team. I work as a medical worker. But prior to that, I was one of the volunteers within the Health Champion Team. These are the people who are trained to pass on messages about coronavirus and effects of the disease when the disease just appeared. So my role there currently, I engage with the community, those who have been asked to isolate or those who have been asked to get tested. So we go together with nurses to lead testing and engagement. So this is what I've been doing. So I'm part of what people are doing. But my actual background also is not far away from health. I'm a clinical officer, someone who's been trained overseas as a nurse practitioner. I used to work in community centers, prescribe medication to patients who need my help and repair them to hospitals, whether they need to be admitted or they need further investigation or operations. Thank you, that's me there.
Thank you, Madhur. Agai, Agai Wheat.
Hello, everybody. My name is Agai. I'm a mother. And I'm doing education, educated home, you know, as a family daycare worker. And I just volunteer some time with the Mother Coalition and a member of South Sudanese in Victoria, Melbourne. Thank you.
Thank you, Agai. AYUN, Awitek.
Yeah, I'm AYUN Awitek. I'm a deputy of Monica Majak in Mother Coalition Organization. And I'm working voluntary all the community. I'm working with Mother Coalition voluntary. And I'm working with my community too, counseling, fixing the problem, everything. But because I'm elder there, thank you.
Thank you, AYUN. Thank you, thank you very much, panel. I'd like to now go to Dr. Marion Kana. And Marion is going to give us some information around the general kinds of concerns that people are having about vaccination. There's been all sorts of things going on in the new lately, hasn't there, Marion?
But these vaccines are really wonderful because they can protect us from getting very sick, getting sick with a COVID virus, requiring to go into a hospital or going to the intensive care unit or potentially dying. And so these vaccines work really, really, really well to protect us from getting sick. They also prevent us from making our family and our friends sick. So it protects us, it protects our family, our friends, and it also protects our community. And so when it protects our community, that means that the virus doesn't spread from one person to the next, to the next. It gets interrupted. And that means that we hopefully will not have to have lockdowns, that we don't have to have restrictions. That means that we can go and have a birthday party or we can go to weddings or we can go to the gym or we can go and do lots of things which we cannot do at the moment or where we don't have as many people who can go and do it. We can go into a restaurant and we can eat at the restaurant. We don't have to have takeaway. So having the community vaccinated protects us, our family, our friends, and our community. So there have been, all the vaccines which we have, that is the AstraZeneca and the Pfizer are very good at preventing us from getting very sick or going to a hospital or dying. Because we have now mutants, we've got variants in the virus, these vaccines do not stop all the infections. You can still get an infection with coronavirus. But instead of you being very sick, it's just like you have a bit of a cold. It isn't something, you don't get very sick. It reduces the chance of you getting sick. But when you do get sick, you have a bit of a sniffle, you have a little bit of a cough, but you don't get sick enough to go to a hospital.
Well, that's an incredible change, isn't it? From the fact that ultimately, everybody has been vulnerable to the fact that you don't know how you're going to respond to coronavirus.
Correct. And so that gives me a lot of comfort. I feel safe. When I look after patients, I look, I feel much, much more protected. I have elderly parents. My parents are 81 and 82. I don't have to worry that I'm going to make them sick. My parents also have been vaccinated. They have had their first dose. And next week, they were both getting their second dose of AstraZeneca. Okay? So it's very, very important that, you know, one of the things I am most concerned about, I work in a hospital, that I could get COVID from a patient and then come home and give it to my family. And I don't want that to happen. And so the vaccine protects me. It reduces greatly the chance. But my parents, my mother and my father still also need to get the vaccine to make sure that they are also really protected. It is not enough, you could still, with these new variants, the Delta variant, the Alpha, the Papa variant, we can still pass the virus to each other. The old Wuhan virus, the original virus, the vaccine just about completely stopped all the transmission. With these new variants, the main thing is it prevents severe disease, it prevents hospitalization, it prevents people from dying. So that's the really, really important thing. We also now know that these vaccines are very safe in pregnancy. So if it's the first, second, or third trimester, it is very, very safe. It is also safe to breastfeed. It protects the baby. It doesn't stop you from becoming pregnant or from having children. We actually have several people, nurses, who have tried to get pregnant for many, many years. And they had their COVID vaccine and then a month later, they got pregnant. So we don't have a fertility problem at all. So fathers can have children, mothers can have children. It doesn't cause any problems there. We have a lot of information now from overseas that these vaccines are very safe in pregnancy. And it is important that a pregnant woman, if she's eligible, can get the vaccine. Because if you have a 25-year-old woman who is pregnant and a 25-year-old woman who is not pregnant, the woman who is pregnant, if they get infected with COVID, will get more severe disease. And so it's important to go and take the vaccine to protect the mother and to protect the baby. Okay? So those are important things.
Can I ask you a question, Marion? Are pregnant women, no matter what age, eligible for vaccine in Australia?
Not at the moment, not at the moment. It is under discussion. So you have to be eligible because of your work. So if you work in healthcare, if you work in a residential aged care facility, if you have another medical condition, then you can get the vaccine if you're over the age of 40. But at the moment, if you are very healthy, if you don't work in healthcare, you don't work in one of those occupations, and you're pregnant, that does not allow you at the moment to go and get the vaccine. It is under discussion. So hopefully, in the near future, it will mean eligibility.
That's great, Marion. Can you outline for our audience at the moment, who is eligible and for what vaccine?
Okay. So the simplest thing at the moment is to just look at age, okay? So everybody over the age of 40 is eligible to get vaccine. If you are between 40 and 60, we prefer you to have the Pfizer vaccine. If you're above the age of 60, we prefer you to have the AstraZeneca vaccine, okay? Now, the Pfizer vaccine, you need two doses. With the AstraZeneca, you also need two doses. With the Pfizer vaccine, the interval between the first dose and the second dose is three to six weeks. For the AstraZeneca, it is four to 12 weeks. It is really important that you get your first dose and the second dose. The first dose, it teaches the immune system how to go and identify and protect you. And the second dose, it really goes, it does revision. It is just like when you at school, you learn a lesson once and then you go and learn the lesson again, and then you're very good at it. And so your immune system is very good at it. And it can really help to protect you against severe disease. So don't just think you're protected after one dose. One dose helps. Two doses are really important to go and have.
And so if you've had one kind of vaccine, Marion, if you've had Pfizer or you've had AstraZeneca, must you have the same vaccine for the second dose?
At the moment, yes. So unless you have bad complications after one dose, after one vaccine, which happens very, very rarely, you will want to go and have the same. So Pfizer, and then Pfizer, AstraZeneca, and then AstraZeneca, no matter what age. Because the age difference was only introduced a few months ago. So some people had AstraZeneca who were 42 years old. Now, if you're 42-year-old, if you get your first dose, you would get Pfizer. But if you were 42-year-old, had AstraZeneca and had no problems with AstraZeneca the first time round, then you get AstraZeneca again. That may change in the future. But that is the recommendation right now. We have studies to go and look at how good it is to do what we call mix and match. At the moment, we do not know how safe it is and how effective it is. I think it is going to look good that you can do that in the future. But at the moment, the TGA, the Therapeutic Goods Administration that regulates the vaccines, does not allow us to go and do that. It only allows AstraZeneca and AstraZeneca, Pfizer and Pfizer. But I think in the future, they will allow us to do that, but not right now.
Okay. So let's just clarify that for everybody here this evening. At the moment, if you are over 60, you should have AstraZeneca. If you are under 60 and you haven't been vaccinated with AstraZeneca, then you can start with Pfizer. But you need to have two doses of Pfizer or two doses of AstraZeneca. Is that right, Marion?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. What about people? And I know there are people within the South Sudanese community who are not completely sure of their biological age in terms of, you know, their birth was not recorded in the same way that it is in Australia.
I don't have a magic answer. I think you need to get the best as close as you can get, I think. And just give it the best guess. You know, if, you know, you probably would know whether you're 40 or whether you're 80. So, you know, the difference really is at around about the age of 60. And the thing is, that's where the cutoff is for the vaccine. And the reason that we have that cutoff is because there is a rare complication which can occur with the AstraZeneca vaccine in younger people. So if you are between the age, you know, if you're under the age of 60, especially if you're 40 to 49-year-olds, those people have had the hardest problems. You can get these blood clots in strange places and low platelets, and the platelets are the sticky things in your blood to prevent you from bleeding. Now, this does not happen very often at all. It happens about one to two times to 100,000 people. And if you think about how many people is 100,000, I find it hard to think about. But if you think about the Melbourne Cricket Ground, the MCG, it has 100,000 people in that. And the chance of this complication is one or two people out of those 100,000 people. So that means it's 99,998 who do not get that. So it is, it is something which can occur. And when it can occur, it's important to diagnose it rapidly. Because if we identify it and we get treated, we have good medicines to make it much better so that people do not get severe disease. So after AstraZeneca, be worried about day four to day 30. So if it's straight away, you don't worry. But day four to day 30, people have a bad headache or they can't see properly, or they have speech problems, or they have pain in the abdomen, which is unusual, or pain in the calf, or shortness of breath, you need to go and see a doctor. If it's, if you're sick, you go to the emergency department. If you're not so sick, you can go to the GP. And they can do a blood test to make sure that you don't have this problem. If you do have that problem, we now know how to treat it. So the chances of somebody dying, if you get this thing, get this thing in Australia, is four in 100. That is a lot better than when we first found out about it, which was one in four. Now, it's four in 100. So the mortality has gone down because we know what to look for and we know how to diagnose it and how to treat it. So it is, it is a small risk. But the risk in the people who are over the age of 60, it's only one to two per 100,000. The benefit, however, if you're over the age of 60, the older you get, the more chances there are that you get very sick when you get COVID. For every 10 years, three times as many people get very sick. And so you have a much higher chance of having to go to a hospital or going to go to the intensive care unit or of dying. And so when you weigh up, what is my risk of having AstraZeneca versus what is my, with the blood clots? Versus what is my risk of getting very sick with COVID, requiring intensive care or dying? If you're over the age of 60, the benefit is absolutely there to go and take the AstraZeneca vaccine. It is much better to go and do that.
Thank you, Marion. Can I ask you, why is it that we are not vaccinating people under 40 at the moment?
Oh, I wish we could, we just don't have the supply, it's all a supply issue. If we, we, we make AstraZeneca here in Melbourne, we have a factory to make it. But for the Pfizer vaccine, we import it. And we just do not have as much vaccine as we would like. And so that is the reason they, they have eligibility for that. So because COVID gets much worse the older you are, they're going down those age groups. So it was originally those over the age of fifty could get, um, vaccine, then those over the age of forty, and then when we get lots of those people vaccinated, we'll go down to those over the age of thirty. And they keep on going down, because the younger you are, the less severe the COVID disease is. The virus is not so bad when you're, when you're young.
Hmm, oh, that's so interesting. Um, so yeah, so very important that particularly elders get, get vaccinated. And of course, as the, as the vaccine program is rolled out, it will be made available to younger people as we are able to get more of the Pfizer vaccine. So that's really important for people to know. Um, I know that it has been very difficult for the South Sudanese community, um, with the lockdowns, because from my, from my knowledge, and I've worked with the South Sudanese community for about fifteen years, that, that it is a very, very social community. It's a community that loves to be together, that has large families, that loves to be together with, you know, intergenerational groups. Um, so I think it's, it's super important to consider for the South Sudanese community that if you want to maintain that level of social interaction, the more vaccine the community can get, the less likely we are to go into lockdown and that be less possible. Is that right Marion?
Oh, absolutely. Or if we have to have restrictions, that the restrictions are not as severe. So it may not be a complete lockdown, but they may put some restrictions on, but they're not nearly as, as stringent as they are right now. So it is the best way to protect you, your family, your friends and your community, and to prevent a lockdown.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. How do we go about getting vaccinated? Where do people go? Do they just go to their doctor? Do they go to the local hospital?
Um, so it depends what your age is. If you're over the age of sixty, there are GPs, who could, general practitioners, who have AstraZeneca. There are not many GPs right now that have Pfizer vaccines. So if you're under the age of sixty, there's only a few GPs at the moment that have the Pfizer vaccine. So if you're over the age of sixty, you can go to your GP, or you can go to a vaccination hub. So for example, at Sunshine Hospital, there's a vaccination hub. At the Showgrounds, there's a big vaccination hub. If you're over the age of sixty and you're getting AstraZeneca, you can just walk in and go and get it, you don't have to make an appointment. They prefer you to make an appointment, but you don't have to have an appointment. You can make an appointment by calling a number. They, if you press zero, you can get an interpreter, or you can go online and you can make a booking there. If you're under the age of sixty and you need Pfizer, you have to go and make a booking. And that is because they are very carefully planning what to do with the supply. We only have a very limited supply, so we need to make sure we know exactly how many people get their first dose, how many people get their second dose. And so for planning purposes, you need to go and make a booking. So if people aren't as familiar with the computer on doing things online, it may be something which the community can help each other to go and make the bookings, um, together, um, to go and help with that.
Absolutely, and I think it's something that young people can support, you know, their, their families with. If their families don't have the same level of understanding and knowledge about computers and about online processes for booking. The other thing I can also offer the South Sudanese community is if you're in Brimbank, you can go to one of your local neighbourhood houses or community centres, and the staff there can support you to make a booking, um, and do that online. Because most of the bookings are online, and you don't want to have to go and, you know, wait in a line in the cold for a long, long time, particularly if you're taking elders to do that, then, then it's a good idea to get some support from an organisation like your local neighbourhood house or community centre, and they can support you to do that. Um, I think it's really important to understand that at the moment, we can't get Pfizer easily, because there's just not enough supply, as Dr Marion has just said. So we would all be vaccinated with Pfizer if there was enough in the, in the country, wouldn't we Marion?
Yep, that would be the ideal, that would be the ideal. But AstraZeneca is a very good vaccine, it is a good vaccine. There is not much difference between Pfizer and AstraZeneca in preventing severe disease. There is not much difference at all. In preventing infection, the mild disease, there is a difference. The Pfizer is better. But against a severe disease, the Pfizer and AstraZeneca are very, 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 very similar. And the advantage of Pfizer is you've got a shorter time interval before you get fully protected. So I like that, I like to protect people as rapidly as possible, but there just isn't sufficient supply. And so we, the decision that is made is that over sixty, we take AstraZeneca. It's a very good vaccine to protect people. When we have many, many more supplies, we probably will use Pfizer for everybody, and/or Moderna or one of those other vaccines, which may have a shorter time interval. Um, but, um, one of the other important things to know is that with both vaccines, the next day, in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, you will have some, there's a good chance you will have some pain where the injection was, it may be swollen. And you may feel a little off, you may feel a little bit more tired, you may have a bit of a headache, you may have some aches and pains. And what that is, it's your immune system, it's getting revved up, it's getting ready to go and fight. It's getting trained up, and so that goes away after twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Um, so you don't have to worry about that, but you need to know to go and plan it. So if you had a wedding or a big party going on or something like that, you don't want to get the vaccine the day before. You want to make sure you have a day where you can rest a little bit to let your body go and your immune system work, and you don't have to be worried about that.
Yeah, that's good advice. Um, Marion, we've got a question about the fact that the virus is mutating. How effective are the current vaccines against the, you know, the, the current mutants and the future mutants? This is a question that, um, that one of our panelists gets a lot.
So the viruses are getting more clever every time they mutate. It's sort of like playing the lottery. So every time that the virus replicates, it, it, it divides and makes more of itself, there's a chance that there's a mistake in the genetic material. And then some of those mistakes make it stronger to go and survive against vaccines. And if you have lots and lots of virus around, because lots of uncontrolled infection, especially overseas, where you have bad, bad infections, um, lots and lots of people getting that, you get lots and lots and lots of virus. And so it's like the lottery, you, you keep on playing the lottery, if you just buy so many lottery tickets, then you're going to get a virus that is going to have an ability to evade the vaccines to greater extent. The really good news is that all the vaccines at the moment, the ones which we have in Australia, the AstraZeneca as well as the Pfizer, they work very well to prevent severe disease. So that being a mutant, a variant, means that you still can get a cold of having mild disease, versus the original one, you didn't get the mild disease. With the mutant, with this variant, you do get the mild disease. But the severe disease, you don't get with the, um, with these ones. I don't know what the future holds, but what we need to do as a human race is that we need to control the virus, keep the numbers down, both in Australia and around the world. And that means that in order to prevent this happening, we need to vaccinate the world. And we, we cannot, you know, being selfish and holding all vaccines for us and not vaccinating countries which need it, means that there is a chance of these viruses, um, um, mutating more, and then potentially it bites us back because, um, because then the vaccine may not work as well. I think I saw some questions floating by very quickly, but I couldn't read them, so.
There's a question about the fact that, um, you know, this happened to me as well. Making a phone call in the morning to book a vaccine, but it was not picked up until the afternoon. Um, and I, I actually got told online that, um, you know, to try again next week. Um, but you know, they're just, uh, the panelists are wondering, is there a particularly good way of organising your vaccine, you know, or a time to call to get a booking?
Um, probably the most efficient way of doing it is doing it online. I think that is by far the fastest, simplest, so if you can find somebody to help you to do the booking online, that is a lot better. Very early on, when the bookings started, online bookings on the phone, they had over seventy thousand phone calls in fifteen minutes. So, um, there were, eh, so they had to bring lots and lots of people on board to go and help with that. Um, they now have more, and now, but wait time on the phone is not so long anymore. Just try again a little bit later, um, but it's much, much better. Sometimes you get a time when it just, many people decide, oh, I want to get the vaccine. They all call together, and so it may take a little bit longer. The most efficient way is doing it online, but just try again otherwise, um.
I, I saw this when, when I was trying to book online, uh, well, I tried on the phone, and then I looked online and it was about, there was a, there was a button that said, you know, locate the nearest surgeries. And then there was a range of different surgeries that I could try, and that's how I found a place to get vaccinated, you know, near my home. Um, I had the AstraZeneca, I'm fifty-four, um, so you know, I had the AstraZeneca before my age group moved to Pfizer, but I will be having another AstraZeneca dose. I certainly had no side effects. I hope that doesn't mean my immune system's not responding, Marion, but.
No. No, it's just, no, uh, we know that even if you don't have any side effects, then, um, your immune system still works really well against it. But, um, one of the other things which is really important is that the complication of the blood clots and the low platelets, it's really a first dose phenomenon. You did get it with the first dose. Um, with the second dose, um, the, the chances of something happening at the worst would be one and a half per million. But I don't think that that is true. I think it's actually much lower than that. Because speaking to colleagues in the United Kingdom, where they've now had seventeen million doses of second, second doses, I cannot find a single hematologist who thinks that they have seen true TTS, this thrombosis and thrombocytopenia syndrome with the, with the investigation there. So this is very much a first dose phenomenon, which is the reason why we feel very comfortable to go and say, you've had your first dose of AstraZeneca, no matter how old you were, you can get the second dose of AstraZeneca.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So that's, that's good. That, I think that answers, um, the, another question that was here, that was about under sixties getting AstraZeneca. If you've had the first dose of AstraZeneca and you're under sixty, and you didn't have terrible side effects, which is, you know, extremely rare, then have the next dose of AstraZeneca. If you're under sixty and you haven't been vaccinated yet, you can opt for Pfizer. Is that right Marion?
That is correct. Yep, if you're over the age of four, be, between the age of forty and sixty, you can get Pfizer. Um, or you may have, if you've got another medical condition, or you work in hotel quarantine, or you work, um, at the airport, or you work in a residential aged care facility, or in a hospital, yeah, if one of those occupations, um, then you can also get it.
Okay, that is really good to know. Now, I'm going to encourage anybody watching to also, um, you can put a question to the panel. Um, you can just do that on Facebook, you know, make a comment, and, um, and that will be relayed to us. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask the members of the panel, um, to, to share their experience of A, being vaccinated, um, if they have been vaccinated. And, and I'd also like to just pose a question to the panel in terms of, we know that there is some reticence or hesitancy in the South Sudanese community, um, to getting vaccinated or getting tested, that has also been the case, um, earlier in the pandemic. And I'd just like to ask the, uh, the panelists why they think that is, and, and what they think the concerns are in the community, and, and how, yeah, so let's have a, have a think about how we can best address those concerns, um, while we have Dr Marion with us. So, um, panelists, who would like to go first, not you?
Yeah, well, thank you Liz, thank you for the question. I, I've never got vaccinated yet, and not because I fear the vaccine, but I just want to observe first of all, because there are a lot of information that are going on, uh, within the vaccine itself. Uh, the problem here in Australia, I think, there are no more information that are being given to the communities in term of misinformation that are going on. Uh, all information is being restricted only about COVID-19 vaccination and how important it is actually for the people uh, within the community. That itself does not open up people to understand the implications, to deal with misinformation that are being spread uh, on Facebook or other social media. For example, I, I think it was three weeks ago when there was inquiry that was going on in, uh, America, where Dr Pashi, uh, was investigated, his emails and how he was communicated, communicating with other people outside, America and within America. And I think that was on Facebook, and many people were hearing that. And to somebody who have low hea- health literacy would believe that, you know, there's controversy that is going on, not only for black or being white, but as all human race. So it is important sometimes to dispel such misinformation, if at all they exist. But if such inquiry are correct, then there's another way of addressing them. Telling community, hi, yeah, it's happening, but again, it might not be right, because such communications were going on, and they were investigated about, uh, the, the, the study, because Dr Fa- Pashi later on said, there was a study being done actually to investigate, uh, many viruses, and how they interact with human interfaces, to see whether or not psych viruses could be resistant, human being could resist them. So now, if somebody's saying that, you know, someone was investigated and found out that there was communication that was going on, and there's no clarification that's being given, somebody who have low health literacy, then it becomes a problem, certain news can spread all over the community, and this is what I'm getting. The moment I talk with the community members, they say, we don't think what this vaccine is saying. When you say why that is being rushed, you know, there are no good studies that are will, will provide it in order to ascertain effectiveness or efficient, efficiency of the vaccine, then become a concern to tell someone. Then others will claim, okay, how many black were there in the study? So some of them would just say, well, we are all human beings, we have the same genetic makeup. But, but again, it's about time to tell them, yes, it's safe. The better you have it, the better chances that you may not get, uh, COVID-19, that would affect you throughout the life, because, of course, there are side effect. So there was also another information yesterday, but one, about discourages that were. So there was also another information yesterday, but one, about miscarriages that were happening around the world. Though around six hundred and sixty miscarriages that happened due to COVID nineteen. There were also some issues to do with heart attacks, about five thousand three hundred and fifty. Remember it very well. Uh, there were some sort of other uh, mentalities that were happening, but there was certain vaccine according to what they say. But you know, they said also that, you know, vaccine as a toxic issue with the human being. You know, all this information are all outside there. So I guess information session like what you're doing here, uh, Liz, uh, and Monica, myself, but plus the rest of the team, especially Maroon, I think it's quite very important to expand it better in a way so that we have it every time, maybe a fortnight and discuss most important thing that are quite crucial for people to understand in terms of vaccine benefit and some adverse effect. Because of course, every, 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 every medicine or maybe every uh, you know, treatment has its own side effect, even if you're being vaccinated with a penicillin or malaria queen or any type of drugs. Of course, that's side effect. You may have headache, you may vomit, you may even go to relapse to have malaria again. But then that's not mean that, that, that medicine itself is not quite effective. So we should act as human beings, as past experience with other drugs. So that they say, yes, COVID nineteen is not in the, the other drug, not all the same, you know? You take it, you have side effect, of course, like any other drug. So side conversations are quite important and this is where I understand, you know, yeah, uh, the conversation to do with the, what you've done today uh, is quite good enough for our community to be able to understand where we're coming from and where we're going to with this vaccine. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mabua. Yeah, look, I think there's, look, and um, Henry's also made the comment that there's already a lot of misinformation on social media um, that's, that's moving around the community. Um, and, and Henry is wondering if there are other programs set aside by the health sector to disseminate correct information. Um, and I guess, you know, the, the whole social media thing is, is, it's very fraught um, in terms of, you know, of misinformation. I think it's very tricky to ensure that um, that the community is getting the right information. But I guess, I'm, I guess that's why we need to have these kinds of conversations and we need the leaders within the community, but we also need the community members who are watching this and who are engaged with other men, other parts of the community to also spread the word that in actual fact, you are at much higher risk if you don't get vaccinated. Um, I also think that there is, you know, there's a number of different things that have historically happened in African communities around forced vaccination trials historically um, that also play a role in some of the mistrust of the government in this situation. Would you, would you agree with me, Tuch, about that?
Uh, yeah, I think I would agree with you with that because uh, in the early on when the pandemic started, we used to have uh, forums like these and, and actually keeps coming up because there were, it happens in South America and in other areas whereby the vaccination trials were, 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 were forced on people and had a lot of impact on people. So people began to, to develop that tendency against uh, any vaccines. So I would also say that uh, with South Sudanese community, just a community, yes, uh, that came from the war recently and a community that has been at war from, from the country of origin where they came from, got independence two thousand and eleven. There's a lot of trauma, there's a lot of things that they worry about, but they were not exposed to vaccines. And I would say, uh, a generation like us would say, maybe the first pandemic just is the one that happened and the one that we are aware of. But majorly, uh, the, the Australian society or other societies in the West are prepared. They, they know where disease outbreak, what need to be done, how the vaccine work and the rest of that. So, but as a community, uh, there's a little knowledge out there about the vaccines. Then now it came to a point whereby there's a lot of information, which is too hard for them to decipher, to understand exactly which information is the right and which one is wrong. So that actually I would say that uh, it create a lot of confusions to dis- to decipher what, what is the right information? What is the wrong information, given the history of how these vaccines were, were actually being used or being tested on people and, and, and the level of literacy within the community. I would say that would have developed or could have contributed into the hesitant of the people to actually uh, come out and, and, and take the vaccines. But the South Sudanese community are trying. Uh, there's a lot of community members that have really come. And as I told you before, I work as a recovery officer, the pandemic response team. So down in southeast, we had a group of elderly people from South Sudanese who went down to sundown and they got vaccinated. And it was shown on the news and everybody saw it and how the community came out to do that. So these are some of the activities that the community are trying now to do, at least to restore that trust that uh, actually the vaccines can, can protect. Uh, I personally haven't taken my vaccination yet because I'm not in that uh, age range. I'm still waiting. So, so until it is available, then that's when, yeah, I'm still young. So, yeah, so I would, I would agree with that, that there's, there's that a bit of that perception which is in the background. And then the, the literal is literacy level within the community. So I would say those are some of the few things that might have contributed. So there's a lot of work that need to be done within the community. And as you pointed out before, through the community leaders, through the uh, community members that actually are from health profession. So they also need to come out and, 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 and talk to the community and engage the community about what is, what is the vaccine, how does the vaccine works and all of that. And also to, to actually reduce the misinformation which is out there. Because once a person who doesn't have a medical background, like a person like me, I haven't, I don't have any, any health background. But if I read this on the internet and I read that on the internet, I kind of get scared which one is the right one and what do I need to, to follow. So, so I would say that's actually contributed a lot, yeah, so that is.
Well, certainly my experience during the start of the pandemic was, there was actually, there was, there was quite a bit of fear in the South Sudanese community over testing as well. And um, and I was, you know, a, a little confused by that. But I, I think I came to understand that, you know, that in a community particularly that has experienced the level of trauma that the South Sudanese community has um, and it's intergenerational trauma. Um, and then to have experienced the kind of racial vilification that they have within the Australian community, that doesn't help to build trust, to build trust of authorities, to build trust of government, you know, to build trust, um, you know, in terms of, of, of the Australian community having, having the, the, you know, the concerns of the South Sudanese community and this side. So I think there's a, there's a level of that going on from what I've been able to see. And yes, I completely agree with you that the, that health literacy is a really, is a really big issue. Um, and I guess, you know, the, the more we can encourage young people to move into the health sector and to the education sector, the better it's gonna be. Um, somebody else want to comment on the hesitancy within the community? Or what they've been seeing or hearing? Mabua?
Can I come in? Yeah?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, before, before I uh, give that uh, opinion about the question, um, actually I did put one question there. Uh, and it's also a question I get from the community members, not only South Sudanese community, there was certainly a wider community. Because currently, um, I'm not only engaging the community to do um, the right thing about the uh, COVID uh, safety measures, we are also promoting the vaccines. So a lot of questions we are getting from there. They are there. And in particular, um, the, the problem is the trust. People are not trusting the government. Why? Because the government say this today, tomorrow it change. Government insists in something, tomorrow it change. People are asking why our government is not providing the vaccine when the population is, is not that much compared with other countries. And we are a very wealthy uh, uh, country. This is, this is one of the, one of the issues. People ask, people think that the government is insisting for something and there is something behind it. If they are, if they were keen, if the government was keen, why are not bringing in Pfizer? Why insisting to give our, the uh, AstraZeneca? This is all questions. When we, when, when, when our nation is divided into groups, there are people who will uh, have AstraZeneca, there are people who will have Pfizer, this already has a question mark. Elderly people are asking why, why they are being forced to have AstraZeneca? They think that the, the government is trying to get rid of them. We depend on this question. Tell them, no, that's, that's not the correct uh, thing. We explain to them why, why, why it's happening according to our capacity. But you know, this, this counter-changing uh, information. While people, anybody is not uh, educated. Yes, there are people who don't know nothing. They can, they can um, accept whatever been said by media, whether through um, um, like Facebook and so on, there are few, few people, yes. But there are people actually that are really educated, they should get correct information. And also, you know, the issue of um, hesitance within, within South Sudanese community, it's not, it's not, it's not a big deal at the moment. We are working with, with that. And that, that's, that, that someone like me is what we are doing because we explain to them. We tell them, because there was um, misinformation actually, as was put through. People from the beginning, they were thinking that when you go to the testing site, there, there's liquid in that uh, syringes that is going to be put in your body and then you get, you get, you get um, the COVID. We, we remove all this from the mind of the people. So it's no longer there. Now, now the issue is only with the vaccine. Which one, which uh, take, which one is not good, which one is good, we don't, we tell them. But there are a few things there, the, the, the player application. Like for me, I consent for, 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 for um, for Pfizer. As, as a first, uh, like a healthcare worker who's on, on the frontline. But when I went to, 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 to the hospital to, to get my vaccine, I was told there's no Pfizer. So for me, I cannot treat for something, I haven't done it for myself. And I'm a healthcare worker, I decided to have Pfizer, uh, AstraZeneca myself. That was in my, my first, my first injection. For the sake of my community to, to, to accept, this is the reality. Because I, 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 I'm not, I'm not concerned about, about the vaccine. I know any, any vaccine can have um, side effects. Whether painful uh, in the area or redness or headache. I had that also. I had um, pain in my arms, it was swelling, I had headache. And that's not the end of, 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 of thing there. I know any, any, there's side effect. But the issue is how are we giving information? What are we doing? What the government is doing? That's the important thing. So South Sudanese community, they don't, they don't fear about being vaccinated at the moment. But they need strong information because when, when uh, media's come up with information that are not relevant. And then later, governments change the policies. This is, this is another issue. Now, I had my second, I had my second on the fifteenth of June, two days after, it was changed.
Yes, yes.
Okay, if I'm not, if I'm not in a healthcare center, what do you think I, I would think about this? So we can't, we can't actually blame uh, the wider general community. We, 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 the healthcare workers, what we are doing is, is contributing in that incident as well. Because of the decision that I taken because of what we are doing. Then from that, to give that, another, other uh, vaccine.
Sorry, Mabua, your sound, your sound is really breaking.
And then. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Better, yeah. Yes, yes.
Okay, anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm finishing. So, so what, what concern people is um, before changing, changing that uh, everyone who between forty and, 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 and twenty-nine could get it. Right to that was, we, we were being a hard job because people are thinking that there's something behind that the government is imposing on, on people.
Yeah.
But after, after that few, few, few weeks of changing it, people now are, are, are more happy and um, they will, they will, they will be vaccinated. And there are people already uh, got uh, vaccinated. I had my uh, uh, two injections already.
Yep.
And um, people like me also are, are, are following. So even someone will go, was asking me, if somebody die, who is going to compensate them? If somebody, that people who are dying from that uh, from vaccine, you had vaccine, few days later, you, you, you pass away, your health, history was okay, who is going to compensate them? This is the question come to us. We have no answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's not our um, our role there, our, our role play there. We have to say, we get back to you. And this is the problem.
Yeah. I think, I think you've raised a number of really important points there, Mabua. I think, I think there is a level of mistrust and, you know, we've, we've acknowledged that there's, there's some very, very deep reasons for that. But I think also, you know, I think that the intergenerational tra- trauma potentially that the South Sudanese community have, have, you know, have endured um, is also, you know, plays a ro- a, a role in terms of making, of decision-making. Like you said, you know, who is going to compensate? Who is going to look after my family if something bad happens to me? Um, I think all of those things are extremely real. Um, and, and I think they are things that we need to consider in the way that we communicate with the South Sudanese community to, to, you know, to, to assist them in making those difficult decisions. Now, I know that um, Marion has some slides about the, the risk benefit of AstraZeneca. But before we go there, um, if the panel thinks that is going to be useful, I'd like to hear from some of the mothers. Um, Agai, I'd like to hear about what your, what your responses to what you're hearing about the, the, the hesitancy in the community and what we can do to ensure that people, you know, do feel a level of trust that the, that the medical knowledge and expertise is going to serve the community in the long run.
Um, I thank you so much for that. And I would like to thank uh, Dr. Marion for information she gave us. Because even me myself, I got wrong information sometime about all the vaccines. And it's really so scary because even I haven't took mine yet. What we need to do, I think, is just like, give more information to our community. Because uh, has our brother said that there's a lot of uh, um, mistakes, you know, and then information through the medias around all over the world, you know, we just goes to our community and then, you know, they took it in the wrong way. Can you hear me, Agai? Hello?
Yes, I can. I'm, I'm wondering, what do you, what do you think is the best way of getting the correct information to the community when they're feeling so fearful?
The better way is that we have to work so hard, you know, to give uh, more information to our community. And we have to, yes, you know, uh, put hands together as a community, you know, like the South Sudanese community and employ more people or volunteer them to go and knock to the door and then tell, like my mom, she's here. She was happy, she was very keen to have her uh, vaccine. And then suddenly one of my boys walk in and say, oh grandma, don't go and take it. You know, she took it as a serious thing, she doesn't want to go. And she doesn't trust me. Even if I say to her, mom, uh, that's safe, you have to go and take it. She said, no, no, I'm not gonna go because they want to kill us. You know, I don't want to die. So she's not gonna trust me. But if someone from my community, which is not me, came to her and, you know, tried to explain to her, I think she's gonna accept. So she's not gonna trust me, but if someone from my community, which is not me, came to her and, you know, tried to explain to her, I think she's gonna accept that. This person is telling her truth, you know, and she maybe wouldn't be happy to go. So what I need to say about that, we just need to just, you know, uh, uh, you know, talk about, you know, the vaccination. A lot of, you know, members from community to have like a group, you know, to talk about it and then just go and knock the door. Visit maybe once or sometime until our elders. I know in Melbourne, we have not that many, but I know there's a big of number there from our, our elders people. They need, you know, young people and, you know, people who are really keen to go and talk about the vaccine. I think that is uh my suggestion, listen, everybody there.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. I think it has to be from, from, um, from community members that people trust. Um, and it has to be, you know, again, sometimes, you know, I know that, you know, my family is not necessarily going to take my word for it. They, they will, you know, they will need the word of other, of other people within their community that they trust and, and look up to. Um, so I think that's really important, that we look at how that information is conveyed. I think it's also super important, and I'm glad that Dr. Marion is here this evening, um, listening to the fact that the South Sudanese community, particularly those who have experienced great intergenerational trauma, really do feel like there is, you know, there is a level of danger. There is a level of danger in listening to what the government said, you know, because there is a level of danger because the government has not always demonstrated the greatest duty of care towards the South Sudanese people. So I, 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 I hear that and I, and I know that that is, that is a fact. Um, and I think it's something that we all have to listen to and, and respond to in a way that is going to provide more trust in the South Sudanese community that they are not at danger. You know, they are not in danger from, from, from the government and from, you know, from the powers that, that, that control, control things in this country. Um, Monica or AYUN, did you want to comment on what you're seeing and hearing from the community about their hesitancy or, or, you know, or in, in, um, you know, encouragement to get vaccinated? Monica?
Yeah, I think I will talk a little bit, oh, and I will let Monica come after me.
Okay, so Agay, AYUN?
Monica, you are there already. Okay. Hi, everybody, my name is AYUN. I want to comment a little bit about the discussion. Uh, the vaccine is bring the problem to our community because the rumors is when I was before the good information come. Because there is a lot of people hear from the media, they hear from others' side, like to say the vaccine will kill the people, that, that why everybody scared to do them. But I'm the one take the vaccine. But my question now to Dr. Mari- Marion, I want to ask her because she said if you are under sixty, you will take Pfizer. You, if you are over sixty, you will take uh AstraZeneca. But for me, I'm under sixty and I take AstraZeneca. I don't know, I want, I want her to explain to me what will be happen for that. Because I wrote something there and I send a message, but nobody respond to me.
Oh, I, I, I actually tried to, AYUN, where I was saying, you know, I'm the same as you, I'm under sixty and I've had AstraZeneca once. Um, and I was asking Dr. Marion, should I go and have the second lot of AstraZeneca? Or should I have Pfizer? And she said, no, I should go and have the AstraZeneca because the, the complications that can happen with AstraZeneca only happen with the first dose. So if you've had the first, you haven't had problems, you definitely should go and have the second lot of AstraZeneca.
Well, boy, yeah, okay.
Is that right, Marion?
But, yeah.
Exactly right, exactly right. So, yep, I know it's frustrating with COVID, things change all the time and that's because we learn things. Um, and as we learn things, what is good is that the government actually tries to put that into policy. But it does make it confusing for everybody. So that is the reason they changed it. It would have been much easier for the government to just ignore this and keep it simple. But, you know, they want to make sure that they reduce the risk for anybody and that adds confusion. And I understand that wholeheartedly, I completely understand that. My parents are in their eighties, they worried about the blood clot. My mother had had a previous brain hemorrhage and she was worried. So I had to explain, this is not like the previous blood clots, like a normal blood clots, this is an immunological thing. So, uh, but it can be confusing and there's a lot of misinformation around. There's a lot of misinformation around. So if you have any questions, ask me and I will do my best to tell you, to the best of my knowledge. But I could tell you, I could tell you what I know today. Tomorrow I may learn something new and different and so if you ask me a question, I will go and give you the most up-to-date information.
Okay.
Are you in?
Okay, to finish my talk, yeah?
Yes, I just was going to ask you, have you had, have you had AstraZeneca?
Me? Yep. Oh, yeah. I had that on, on April.
Yeah.
But I feel okay and I feel is wrong, there is nothing happened to me. And I'm encouraging my community too now. I told them to take that because what, what is made me to, to, to make a decision to take that vaccination? Because my mom, she's in Europe and my mom, she is over eighty. And she took two dose and nothing happened to her because she have diabetes and she have blood clot and she have a problem in the heart. And she took those one and she's okay now, she don't have anything. That why they made me is wrong too and I went there and I took mine too and I said, if something not happened to my mom, why not I'm going to take that? That why I made my decision and I went there to take it and I'm encouraging my community too. I talk to them now about the vaccination and I told them all the time, everybody can go there and take vaccination because if something happen to you, if something God give you that time, you will die, not the vaccination. This is I explain to them all the time. But my community need a lot of explanation to understand what is going around them. This is my topic, yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Marion, just want to get your second dose, don't forget your second dose, your second dose is very important.
Yeah, I'm going to take my second dose on July.
Yeah, excellent. We'll both get our second dose in July, yeah? Um, I wanted to go to AYEN now and, oh, Monica, was she still there? I can't see her. Oh, Monica, did you want to comment on what you'd be seeing before we go to A, to AYEN?
AYEN, not AYUN.
You're muted at the moment, Monica. Can you take yourself off? You're muted at the, oh, there you go, good.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna, yes, to let AYEN talk first, but I think it's okay because I'm gonna talk about yous. So AYEN, she's one of the youths and she's one of our member in Mother Coalition. It's good she's here so that she can be responsible for some of, most of the, of the young people. Yeah, um, some of the people talk about uh rejection about the vaccine. And I think for, for, for us in our community, it's really better heart. There's a lot of people saying, people are wishing in, in, uh, in the media and uh, people are taking wrong, uh, wrong messages has been delivering there. And it is true because uh a lot of communication came as a wrong way to other people and they took it seriously, like this, these are the real thing, I'm gonna be dying, I'm gonna be. Some people, they're saying, if I get vaccinated right now, I'm not gonna be giving birth anymore or not getting, or not producing a kid. Those thing are there. But uh we have to think about what happened around the world that we're seeing. I'm really encouraging the community, what we're seeing from the beginning when the, when the virus came, like when uh COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen broke out. We see a lot of the other, other country that what COVID nineteen did there was really bad, it was really bad, especially in Europe, uh, like UK and China. Those areas, when, when COVID nineteen broke out, was really dangerous because there was no any cure, that is something that cured the, the, the sickness. And now people, we get the medicine, even though there is more much, uh, more study than people like the people are did in a, in the vaccine. Uh, for me, I think it's much better to get vaccine than to run away from the vaccine and get sick and get more sick or bring sick to, to your family. Uh, I'm actually, I'm, uh, I'm, 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 I'm really, I'm really worried about our community because if we put our attention to, to all these messages or all these wrong information, uh, all these signal will come to you, but no, nothing can rescue you, to, to secure yourself. It is good to take the vaccination to secure yourself and res- rescue other people. So I know, uh, as, as a guy said it before, like his son was talking of, they tell his grandmother like not, not to get the vaccine, it is true. Even I myself, when I, I, when I decide to take the vaccine, my people were not aware. But after I took the vaccine and I told them, everybody was running away from me, saying, why you do that? Why you do that? They all upset, they, they saying, you should not be vaccinated because this vaccine, you don't know what is there, what is inside it. So people, young people, they, we, we, people need to talk to them really, really because the way they took the vaccination, before vaccination, I, I know a lot of young people, they don't like medicine. They don't like medicine, leave alone the, the vaccine of coronavirus. It is really better hurt for them to understand about the vaccination. So that one will do a lot of effect because for them, they know everything, they know how to do connection, they know how to say in internet, they know how to do what. Elder people can understand them and can, can believe them easily. Because when, when, when my child come to me and tell me, don't do that, and I don't have any background about it, I will accept it. I will accept it because I don't know anything about it. And I, I will say, yeah, he knows because he's in the school and or he's educated person. He, he know what he telling me, so I don't need to, 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 to waste time to go to take the vaccination. And I know that he will, will, will kill me or he will give me side effect, like not to give birth or not to look after my children. Some people, they're saying you, maybe you can get like, you, you cannot be walking, you can get a lot of thing in it. So this vaccination actually bring a lot of misunderstanding to other people. So like people saying, the, the government need to give right information. For us, like South Sudanese, we can talk to our people, but you will get a lot of question, but you've been, been questioning. Sometime you can stop, you can't even answer them because the person can bring you the evidence like the, like what I told you last time, there was one of the doctor who was talking in, in USA. He was talking with a confident, he don't want anybody to be, to be vaccinated. And his background is a health person. And if you come, like you're not a health person and come and talk about the vaccination and you don't know any background about it, people will be questioning you, who are you and why you come and talk about the vaccination? So we took the risk actually to, so to get vaccinated. But still, if it is help to our community, we'll be helping because when I took my vaccination, I can understand it because what I has and he was been explaining to me and I, and I, and I understand it. And I said, okay, I can take my vaccination because I know when I gets, maybe it will be bad for me. So in that case, I have to get my vaccination. It is good for you to decide it for yourself, not just somebody who can telling you, take, take it or something like that. Even right now, for me, I'm talking here to encourage our community, but don't take it as if I'm pushing you to go to take the vaccination. But you need to know, the vaccination is, is, is much rescue than you not taking the vaccination. If you take the vaccination, it will rescue you or rescue your family. So you need to, you need to, you need to understand that, people need to understand it. Because when you take the vaccination, uh, it's normal like the other vaccine that we've been taking last years ago. You took vaccination for flu, for everything, it is the same. Last time, when people talking about it, people saying there's something will come out in your hand, will show numbers and show everything in the vaccination. But when I was get vaccine, I see it's just normal clearly vaccination. So I'm, I'm happy to, 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 to take my second dose now. I'm gonna take my second one. So people need to, people need to, to understand it because other country who doesn't have vaccination, nowadays, they're calling for vaccination, they need vaccination to be taken to them because it will rescue people, like India, for example, everybody was seeing that last time. And they need that medicine, they need vaccination to, to rescue them and they accept it. Because in, in say people are dying, billion of people are dying, it's much better to rescue, to, to rescue them in, 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 in vaccination. So I really encourage people to, to, to understand and young people also about how you can go to talk to your grandma or your, your, your elderly people in the house and tell them not to get vaccinated, it's not good. Your elder person, who, who is in the dangerous? That person is in the danger, if he doesn't take the vaccination, he, nothing can help him, nothing can help that person. So we need to take that. If something killing our people, it will kill all our people, not, not only South Sudanese or not only, not only us, it will kill a lot of people. But as we see in Australia here, especially in Victoria, uh, sometime I, I, I take messages wrong way, like the way I see my thing, like I can see, actually, we're doing well in Victoria and the way people are being rescued, it is, it, it work. It work with people because people now are in safe hand. Because when, when we taking didn't, didn't, this medicine, it help. And with the, with all the advice that government coming out with the advice all the time, telling us do this and do that, this one will rescue people, this one is not good, do this, and people listen to those thing. That's why now the, 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 the death is not like other country in Victoria. So I really, I really, I really appreciate it if we can listen and we do what the government say, even though there's wrong messages are coming or what, the one we can understand is the what can help us and thank you.
Thank you, Monica, I think you made a really important point. It's critical that young people are not, um, are not just buying into some of that mixed messaging and therefore encouraging their elders in their house, their grandparents and their aunties and their uncles not to get vaccinated. Can we just quickly now, quickly go to AYEN, because I want to hear from somebody younger? Um, and AYEN, you know, can you give us your perspective about, about this particular issue?
Yep, um, sorry guys, I'll just introduce myself. Um, my name is AYEN. I studied a diploma of community service and I did my placement with um Centre of Migrant Refugee and Health and Sudanese Mothers Coalition, Victoria. So um mainly my views on the vaccine, like as a young um person or a young generation, I do have concerns about the vaccine, like um especially about the long-term side effects. I do have concerns about the vaccine, like, um, especially about the long term side effects. Like, how sure that the vaccine could be a hundred, um, percent effective? Not, sorry, how sure are you that the vaccine, like, in later on, the next years, someone will not, um, develop side effects due to the vaccine? And I also met, um, I also, was it your name, Marion, Marion Kena? Yeah, I also heard you before speaking that the vaccine is safe, um, for those pregnant women, um, those breastfeeding, it's also safe for the baby. But how sure are you that later on, if the baby is born and, you know, the mother have taken the vaccine, how sure that the baby will not develop, um, some medical issues or because of, um, the vaccine that the mother has taken? So these are my concerns, um, about the vaccine. And I would like to get like some answers on that. Yeah.
Marion, are you happy to address those questions?
Sure. So, um, we have not studied the vaccine for years and years and years, okay? But everything that we know about the vaccine right now, for example, the Pfizer vaccine, what it does, it has mRNA, it's messenger RNA, it's basically the recipe on how to go and make the spike protein. And so you giving the body the recipe, the, your own body looks at the recipe and it then makes the protein, the spike protein. And then the body makes antibodies against that, that, those things, okay? Um, and then the recipe, it disappears. It's like Snapchat, you see it there and it's gone. Okay, disappears there. And all you have then is you have the antibodies against that. I cannot give you a hundred percent guarantee of what's going to happen in future. What I can tell you is to the best of my knowledge, I think that this is very safe. There have been millions of pregnant women who've been followed up in the United States now. And they have looked at the baby and we don't have any reason to believe it is not safe because of the way that the vaccine has been constructed. Can I give you a hundred percent guarantee? I can't. But I can tell you to the best of my knowledge, that I really believe that it is safe in comparison to what we have with this virus, which is absolutely devastating. Your devastating communities internationally and we can see what it has done to, in Melbourne during the second wave, how we had this really long lockdown. We've had a fourth lockdown, New South Wales, it can spread very, very rapidly. And especially among our elders, our elderly people who are so susceptible to that. It can cause severe, severe disease. But I cannot, you think I pride myself on? Is that I will always tell you the truth to the best that I know it. So I can't give you a hundred percent guarantee. But everything that I know and every friend, every family member, I know, I'm recommending this, this vaccine too. Because I am convinced that this is the right thing to go and do, to keep people safe. There is, there have been lots of rumors and misinformation on Facebook and Twitter and Instagram, social media about vaccines, problems with fertility, with, um, women not being able to get pregnant. That is all false, that is not true. I can absolutely tell you, we had at least two nurses who've been trying to get pregnant for years and years, and they went and got the vaccine. And four weeks later, they got pregnant. So they said the vaccine makes people pregnant. I don't think that's true.
Oh, goodness.
So, I mean, you know, it, it, it just isn't true, it's a nasty rumor, it is misinformation. Okay, um, so we, um, we do know that it is, um, safe in pregnancy. Lots of people have been followed through. It's also safe to breastfeed, if you're planning a family, you can go and get the vaccine. And then, um, you know, afterwards, like, if you were to get the Pfizer vaccine, you get pregnant and you can get your second dose of Pfizer during pregnancy again. And it's not a problem. If you're pregnant now, you can have your first dose of Pfizer and then a second dose of Pfizer when you're still pregnant or potentially after. You can have a discussion with your doctor about it. This is a change, we learned a lot more about how safe this vaccine is in pregnancy. We have learned that over the last few months, there've been some big studies published in the medical literature on this. Um, and we also have a better understanding that COVID can cause severe disease in women who are pregnant, also than, um, more so than, um, somebody who is not pregnant. And so we got to make sure that people, does that help to answer your question, Ayeen?
Um, yes, it does, um, could I ask another question?
Just a very quick one, Ayeen, because I'm going to break to Henry. Um, and we need to, we need to finish up.
Okay, um, yep, so, um, the second question, like, as there are like, um, blood clots, blood lots for those, um, in their forties or below, below sixties, um, what about, um, people like below thirty? If they take the vaccine, like, when they have, um, severe conditions from the vaccine, like, such as blood clots and other medical, um, issues because of the vaccine, like, are there any, are there any youths that have been vaccinated somewhere, like, where it turned out successful?
But I can say that the normal blood clots that people can get when they're flying on a plane or they're not moving very much, those are different blood clots to what happens with AstraZeneca. The AstraZeneca blood clots, they're basically an immune system. Your immune system makes an antibody against a part of a platelet which makes them sticky. So it's not like normal blood clots. So if you've had blood clots in the past, you've been a thrombosis in the past or pulmonary embolism in the past, that does not mean that you cannot take AstraZeneca. It is very different. It's a very different mechanism, it's an immunological. Does, does it answer your question?
Yeah, they're not, they're not offering under, under thirties any vaccines at the moment. And if they were, they wouldn't be offering AstraZeneca.
No, that's not true.
Oh, really?
No, you can get AstraZeneca at any age, it's just not recommended as a preference. So you can have a choice. But if you are really worried about getting COVID, you can have, you can go and get AstraZeneca vaccine. You need to weigh up the risks and the benefits.
Okay.
So if, for example, let's say you are going to go to Indonesia or a, a country which just has a lot of virus right now, it is much safer for you to go and get vaccinated than not vaccinated. And if your only choice that you have right now is AstraZeneca, I would take AstraZeneca. So it is still possible, but it's the preference, we recommend having Pfizer. But you're not eligible for Pfizer and you definitely want to get protection. People can get AstraZeneca, you just need to weigh up the risk and the benefit for you yourself. And if you had higher risk of getting COVID or if you get COVID and you're at very high risk of getting severe disease, um, in that situation, you can go and get AstraZeneca. But in general, the general rule is AstraZeneca over the age of, Pfizer under the age of sixty.
Thank you, Marion. Let's quickly go to Henry, I think Henry, you wanted to make a contribution and then we need to wrap it up for this evening.
Thank you, um, I got vaccinated last Sunday and I, what came in my mind, I was going to be vaccinated, but I knew, uh, a, a, a source of information, given my connection and participation in the community and people would ask me about vaccination. So the first thing I did was to get vaccinated, experiencing it first before telling others about importance of vaccination. And I am okay, yeah, up to now, I didn't have any. And I'm waiting for second dose. I, 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 I don't know, uh, uh, about people's decision to take vaccine. But if you are in frontline and an advocate, telling the community to get vaccinated and if you cross the questions, are you vaccinated and you are not? You are telling others to get vaccinated when you are not vaccinated. You think about it as, how they will perceive, how they will, how they, uh, that's one thing. The information flattering in, in, I share one on my Facebook page.
I'm sorry, Henry, your, your sound is.
There was, and I suspected one of them. Sorry, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. That, a second, a second, uh, comment is, uh, about information ill fluffing on Facebook. And I got it on my Facebook page because I'm very active person. And there was one person, and I suspect is one of the public figure, somewhere, not in Australia, that was vaccinated, that there was amity strange in, into her arm, pretending she received a vaccine. Uh, people rose up and clap their hands. Her face was height, but her neck here was visible. And if young people get this, uh, this information on Facebook, definitely, they will take those who don't really know cheating on, look at these people, look at this and is being vaccinated with amity range, what is this telling us about? So there are still those information as a public, uh, Dr. Marion, as a public office, uh, health officer. There are those information is still, even if, uh, you give correct information, still there are those, uh, uh, social media misinformation and perception. And something I've seen in, with my naked eyes, that will convince me there are some leaders somewhere escaping vaccine. Uh, it's something also to, to think about. And that's all I can say, otherwise today's discussion is very, very important. And I would like and, uh, to agree with Mabor, that we keep, yeah, advocating for this, keep doing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
For vaccination, it's good protection and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Henry. Unfortunately, your sound is, is got very, very choppy, well, it certainly has from, uh, from where I'm sitting. Um, we need to wrap it up then because we have, we have actually gone over time. Um, I just wanted to thank Dr. Marion very, very much uh, for coming to share her, her knowledge and experience with us. Um, so she is the head of infectious diseases at Western Health. So we are incredibly lucky to have had, um, you know, have had her insight and, and experience with us this evening. So thank you so much, Dr. Marion, really appreciate it. Um, I'd just like to acknowledge all of the panelists for their contribution and for their, you know, their insights into what is happening in the community and how we can best support the community. Um, and of course, I'd like to, um, to thank both Mabor and Monica for, um, for partnering with Brimbank City Council to have this conversation. Um, and yes, certainly, we will look in, we will look, um, at, you know, at running some more live Facebook conversations. Um, if this is considered useful by the community. Um, so thank you all very, very much for coming this evening. Um, and, um, and I hope that we are all just going to go out there into the world and try and support people to make the best possible decisions about getting vaccinated. Nothing in this life is without risk, we know that. All vaccines have had, have had risks associated with them and when they were developed. Um, and this is no different, this has also been very, developed very quickly. We are incredibly lucky that we're in Australia and we are not seeing the level of, of, you know, of death that we, that they are seeing in India and that they've seen in the United States. So, you know, we, we can be very thankful that we are, that we are here and in a relatively safe place. And, um, yeah, I hope that we all go forward and do our very best to, um, to try and allay some of those fears and support people who are very vulnerable to get vaccinated. Thank you all very much for coming this evening.